Fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing while the Honorable Clerk Darth Christie gives the indication.
Almighty God, we acknowledge that you will hold us to account for the way we legislate and administer the affairs of our township and its fine people. We pray for your guidance as we do so. We pray that you would find us protecting the rights of all at all times, that our community and this nation will fulfill all of your purposes. Amen.
Amen. Clerk Christie, please take the roll.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Mr. Christie here. Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. McCray.
Here.
Form is present. Next is approval of the agenda.
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kennedy. Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Propose, motion carries. Next, we have a couple of citizen comments. First will be Chief Jennifer Mansfield.
Good evening, Honorable Board. I was just coming up before you to remind you guys about tomorrow's Coffee with a Cop. Maybe invite you out, as well as to invite everyone else here. Tomorrow morning, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., we will be at Morena's Event Venue. Morena's, try and say that three times fast. Morena's Event Venue. For those of you not familiar, that's the old Charis House, so up on Plymouth Road, right up at Appleton there. So, yeah, and she's a, the owner there has already been very much involved with the community, and she decided that she wanted to host us for Coffee with a Cop. So come on out and chat with us tomorrow morning, 8:00 to 10:00. You guys know the way it works. There's free coffee there. I do believe they're gonna have someone on staff. They're making Fru-Fru coffees for sale if you're interested, but there's always nice, good old-fashioned coffee and some officers for you to chat with. So come see us. Thank you.
Director Mike Dennis.
Mr. Supervisor, Honorable Board, I wanted to just give you a great update in regards to the Oktoberfest that was held this past weekend. The, you know, Festival Committee did a great job, again, planning it. We had fabulous weather. You know, a little warm. Used to be we had to have heaters, now we have fans. But I want to thank Kathy Anderson, Kim Barrow, Missy Garrett, Sam Fox, Elise Julian, Roger Walker, always, Nancy McLean, and myself, in regards to everything that they did, not myself, but part of the group, that, all their planning, hard work. Nancy just kicked butt. Roger is always, and the whole group, Kathy and Kim and Missy, and Elise and Sam, they just do a wonderful, it's only two days, but they do great work. And it is, it's a lot of fun. It's different, different fun from the, from the festival. The hayrides are always a kick, the music, the food, Kids' Day, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a blast. And I want to thank just a couple of the groups, the J.C.'s and the Goodfellows, R.L. Three, R.A., R. Three and St. Val's, for the volunteer groups and the numerous volunteers. You know, Trustee Taylor and her husband helped us out immensely on Friday night. All the other groups that, that are up there helping us out and folks. And, you know, Redford Dance, karate, et cetera, et cetera. So it was wonderfully, wonderful turnout, and I just wanted to let you know that it was our 18th annual Oktoberfest. So just wanted to just thank everybody, because we don't get to tell them enough what a great job they do. And then we do have old-fashioned holidays, December 5th, Thursday, sorry, at the Marquee, which will be here before we know it. So just wanted to thank everyone, and thank you all for being there, too.
Okay, and I usually don't add on to this, but I know Mike was cooking the whole time, but I know Ms. Shawman C. D., you probably didn't see her, because Shawman C. D., when she, she either moves very slow, or she moves 150 miles an hour, so if she was doing the flash, you probably didn't see her. And there were a lot of other people that I can't remember everybody's names, but it takes the whole community to put this on. The Festival Committee leads the charge, and they all do a great job, so thank you all. Sorry about that, Mike. Next, Tamina Ross.
Good evening, Supervisor and Board Trustees.
Name and address. Name and address.
Thank you. My name is Tamina Ross. I'm the Chairperson of Redford Township Dem's Club. My address is 14301 Salem in Redford, Michigan. I'm just calling on behalf, calling, I'm sorry, speaking on behalf of the constituency and the membership board of the Dem's Club, the concerning of lawn signs. Due to this unprecedented event that's going on right now, we have seen several lawn signs that are out and are against ordinance in accordance to Redford Township. Be that as it may, by this being a very important election, I would ask the board, or whoever is in charge, could they at least not exercise the ordinance when it comes to lawn signs? This is a very unprecedented election, and we are seeing signs that people are not adhered to, and other constituents would like to follow their, want to put their signs out for the candidates they want to endorse, including yourselves. So I just ask if it's all possible that we do not enforce the ordinance for the lawn signs, as well as the number of them. I'm not trying to sell cars, but six in accordance to Article 20, 20.08, 20.07, only six are provided, and there's approximately four of you guys are running, including the Treasurer, as well as the Clerk. And that means we won't have enough time for the Presidency, the U.S. Senate, and there are others. Thirty consecutive days, people have been putting out other signs since July, and it's not fair. It's not fair for the constituency, it's not fair for one party. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for hearing me, and thank you for my time.
Thank you. Next, we have a special presentation, audited financial statements as of March 31st, 2024.
Good evening, Honorable Board. I would like to welcome the audit team to present our 2024 audit.
And that was Assistant Finance Director Jackie Harper.
Jacqueline.
Thanks very much.
Jacqueline.
Again, my name's Dave Helisek with Plan Moran. With me this evening, Bill Ricky and Alyssa Fleury, and we're here to present the results of the March 31st, 2024 audits, because it's a financial statement audit, as well as a single audit, for the charged township of Redford. Should have three documents in front of you this evening, the largest being the financial statement itself. The next largest would be the single audit, the federal programs audit, followed by our required communication to those charged with governance. We're gonna touch into each document just a little bit this evening, but not go into, you know, the depth that we had went in on a previous meeting. So Bill, Alyssa and I did meet with Township Management a couple of weeks ago to go through these documents thoroughly and in great detail, address any questions that were brought up at that time, and we're gonna give the board the ability to address any questions that you may have on anything that we either present, or maybe some things that we don't cover as part of this evening's presentation. So we will have that opportunity throughout the evening. Before I turn over, Alyssa's gonna walk through the financial statements, and I'm gonna talk about the opinion. So we were able to give, as a result of our financial, our audit, audit work, an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can give a set of financial statements. What that means is these statements as presented fairly reflect the financial position of the township as of March 31st, 2024, and the change in that financial position, the revenues, the expenditures, same in the cash flows and the notes that are included within the document. Also included in that opinion is an emphasis of matter paragraph, consistent with what we had in the last couple of years. Just brings a note to the reader that included in one of the fiduciary funds is our alternative investments, and all it does is indicate the, the amount of the alternative investments, which just means that they're not readily available, that they're, they're not like stocks or bonds that the market can, we can pull and the market can dictate. There's extra audit work, they're really estimates done by management, we audit those estimates, and they're included within the financial document. So again, the highest level of assurance. Turn it over to Alyssa, and she's gonna walk through the financial statements. If you have any questions as you go along, feel free to stop us, and we'll, we'll try to answer them. Alyssa?
Perfect, thanks, Dave. So I'm gonna take you through some highlights on the financial report, which is gonna be that bigger packet that you have in front of you. So first, I'm gonna go ahead and have you skip to page 13. So this page is gonna show the general fund's balance sheet. So we're gonna be focusing on that first column on the left here for the general fund. So the first thing to note here is this general fund column does include some additional amounts. So we have the general fund, the ARPA fund, as well as some other smaller funds that total these numbers here. So just some highlights, that total asset number, that first kind of bolded line in about the middle of the page. So assets decreased about 7 million in the current year, while total liabilities also decreased about 8.6 million from prior year's 14.7 million. The large decrease here in that amount is that unearned revenue line. This largely relates to the ARPA funds, as more funds were spent in the fiscal year. Coming a little farther down the page, you'll see fund balance. So unassigned fund balance is about 26 million, which is pretty comparable to last year. One thing to note here is that this report is as of 3/31. With property taxes being your largest revenue source, this unassigned fund balance needs to last till the collection and the end of the year at 12/31. So next, I'm just gonna move a couple pages forward to page 15. So this is the income statement. Again, looking at that first column showing the general fund. So again, here we can see that the highest revenue source for the township is property taxes, with being at 25.5 million of the total of 55.6 million in revenue. The majority of that federal grants line, again, that relates to that ARPA funding that was received. Total expenses here are 46 million in the current year, which is a slight increase from last year's 39 million. There was increases to general government of about 3 million and public safety about, of about 6 million. So next, I will have you move a little closer to the end of the statements, so bringing us to page 64. Perfect, so this page shows the schedule of changes in the net pension liability. This first page here that we're looking at is for the general employees' retirement system. So just a couple of things I want to point out here. About halfway down the page, you'll see net investment income. There was a significant increase this year compared to the loss that was last year, and then coming down closer to the bottom of the page, you can see the funding percent for this year of 54%, which increased from last year of 48%. Just flipping one page over to 65, you'll see the same schedule, but for the police and fire employees' retirement system.
Which page was that?
So we are now moving to 65, so just one page forward. Yep. Perfect. So again, this is the same schedule, just for the police and fire. So similar to the last page, you'll see that large increase in net investment income compared to the loss last year, as well as the increase in the funding percentage from 57% last year to about 60% this year. Last thing I kind of wanted to touch on is going to be on page 69. This schedule, again, is gonna look similar to the ones we just looked at, but this is for the OPEB. So this page 69 is, again, the general employees. So the township is actively funding this plan, as you can see with the increase in the funding percentage, from last year's 22.8% to this year's 31%. And this is, again, similar to the next page, which is the same schedule, but for police and fire. And at the bottom there, you'll see the funding percent increased from 13% last year to about 20% this year. So those are the main highlights I wanted to focus on in the financial report. If there are any questions, I can take those. If not, I can pass it over to Bill, and he's gonna go over the single audit report.
Questions from the board. Okay, Trustee Jackson.
Just one quick question. When we're looking at percentages of our OPEB and other pension funding, how's that comparable to other municipalities?
So I would say, you know, certainly you've made a lot of progress. I think from the pension standpoint, you know, you did receive additional funding for the state of Michigan this year to help increase your funding in the general employees. And then, as far as, so I think pension-wise, you know, I guess the best bribery is if you're under 60% funded, the state, you are required to report with the state. What is your plan to get over 60? And with retiree healthcare, that's a, that's a 40% funding rate, so if you're under 40, you're required to do additional filing filings with the state. So although you're not exactly where you need to be in either case, I think what, what I focus on is you've really made significant improvements, especially in, in the retiree healthcare situation, whereas if you look back to the beginning, you know, six, seven years ago, you were less than 5% funded, and now you're already up to over 30%. So to me, I think the focus should really be on what are you doing to address these liabilities? And in the current year, we've seen the township make additional attributions over and above which we're required to do in both the pension funds and the retiree healthcare funds. And certainly, these are liabilities that have accumulated over the lifetime of the township, so it's not something that occurred just this year, it's, you know, 50, 60 years in the making. And so to me, you're doing the right things. You continue to, you know, commit resources to these liabilities, but it's gonna take time to really get to the funding levels that you want to be at.
So the question was, how do we compare to other?
I, I think you're, you're pretty much in the, in the realm for a community of your age. I think what we see is a lot of the younger communities are more funded, and a lot of the older built-out communities are in the position you are. So I think you're similar to comparable communities, you know, older communities with oftentimes more retirees than active employees.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Okay, thank you on this one.
Okay, so we're gonna shift a little bit away from the, from, I'll say, the financial statements, and talk a little bit about the federal grant programs that you received in the current year, what we audited there, and also talk about a couple internal control-related matters. So I'm gonna refer to the federal awards supplemental information, so that's probably the second largest document that you have there. And so what this is, is whenever a community receives over $750,000 of federal grant funds, we're retired to test your compliance with certain grants. And so in the current year, if you look at page seven and eight in this document, this is every federal grant that the township would have received. And so in total, you received just over $10.5 million in federal funding. And so what we do is we have to test certain programs based on how much you spent. And in the current year, we detailed tested, or tested for compliance, the $9.2 million of American Rescue Plan funds that the township expended in the current year. And so we did have one minor finding on that, on that, that I'll talk about in just a minute, but on balance, you know, our testing went very well, and we were in compliance with the rules and regulations, with the exception of one item, which I'll cover in just a moment. So also included in this document is any internal control-related matters we have, either for the financial statement audit or the single audit, and those begin on page 12. So when we talk about internal control-related matters, as Dave mentioned earlier, you know, we were able to provide you a unmodified opinion on your financial statements. So you are in compliance with all the rules and regulations. What these are, are whenever we identify anything that we consider to be a weakness in internal controls, we have to bring that to your attention and report that to you. It doesn't necessarily mean you did something wrong, it just means that there's a potential that some, something could go wrong, so we want to bring this to your attention. And that's, that's really what the first item relates to. So the first finding on page 12 relates to the bank reconciliation process. So in a perfect role, the bank reconciliation, so the money at the bank should be reconciled to what's reported on the books on a monthly basis and done within a timely manner, so typically within 60 to 45 days. So during our audit, we noticed that the bank reconciliations were not always reconciled in a timely manner down to zero. There was always some unreconciling items that kind of rolled over month to month. The township really looked at the process and kind of is revamping everything, and really looked at what is the reason that we can't get this reconciled? And so there's been some significant changes in the process, and I'm confident going forward, this is not gonna be a finding, but during the year, there were some months where it took longer than we would like to get those amounts reconciled. And I will note that, you know, during the process, we didn't identify any, you know, anything wrong, any errors, it was really just the time and effort to reconcile these amounts that caused this finding. The next item on page 13, this relates to the fact that through the audit process, we identified certain things that required adjustment through our audit procedures. And so the expectation is, when we come out to do the audit, the books and records, we don't have to make any changes to us. So everything that's given to us is, is perfect, and we don't have any changes. Now practically, it's fairly common for us to kind of assist with closing the books in certain instances, and we did identify certain journal entries in the current year that needed to be posted to make sure the statements were in compliance with all the rules and regulations. The adjustments that we identified were one-time year-end closing, they didn't affect the day-to-day operations, and these adjustments were things to, you know, were two adjustments to like the pension liability, the retiree healthcare liability, some long-term debt, some deferred items. So these would be things that are not day-to-day activities, but items that need to be recorded so that the financial statements can be prepared. So that's really what this finding relates to. Again, this is a very common finding, one that we'd have at most of our clients, because again, as part of the preparing the financial statements, oftentimes we do it and identify things that need to be adjusted. So that's that one. And the final item I want to talk about is on page 14, and this really relates to, specifically to the ARPA grant. And so the rules related to how you classify your spending of those funds changed a little bit in the current year. And so the city had, had originally planned to expend $531,000 of ARPA funds to pay premium, premium pay to employees, and that was originally classified under this section 4.1, which is public sector employees, which prior to April 1st of 2023 was allowable under ARPA. ARPA came out with an addendum, and they said you're no longer allowed to expend premium pay under that specific category, and so the township reclassified the money paid into a new category, which is 6.1, which is revenue loss. So really, all this was, was the original reporting that was done to the federal government, put that premium pay in the wrong bucket, so to speak. And so the finding is, it was originally reported wrong, it was corrected in the subsequent report, but again, because it was originally reported in the wrong bucket, that's the finding. So again, I don't view this as a, as a problem, because it was corrected, but originally, when we reviewed it, it was in, it was classified incorrectly.
I only have one question.
Sure.
And, and I'm glad that it got corrected, but with ARPA, as we were going through that, the buckets kept changing, where it could go and couldn't go, you know, it was an evolving program. I think when we did this, when it was done, I believe that it was done when the bucket was correct. If we already did it and they changed the bucket, then I don't know, you know, it'll be interesting to find out if, if that happens, are we still doing it the right way? It's just that they changed, changed where it goes after we already did it. So I guess that's my only concern about this. I'm glad, I'm glad it's reconciled. I understand that, but especially with the ARPA accounts, because it was a moving target for a long time, they kept changing it all the time. So I, I'm interested to hear what you have to say about that. If we put it in the right bucket at the right time, they changed the bucket, does that mean we're not in compliance and we had to fix it?
Unfortunately, I would say yes, and I totally agree with you. It's sort of like, we entered this game and then they changed the rules halfway through. So this is something that happens. The federal government continually puts out additional guidance on these programs, and certainly they have the authority to, you know, kind of rewrite the rules as we go along, which I understand makes it a significant challenge for the township. And, and I agree with you, when you originally set the budget and you said this, what we're gonna spend the money on, that was allowable. And then they came out with guidance later on, and they said, no more premium pay is allowed for, for any services provided after April 1st. And so that was sort of a late, late change, and it really did impact your ability, and so unfortunately, we are kind of at, at the mercy of them. If they change the rules, we have to comply with the new rules they put out.
And I guess I think it's real important, because we have people here from the residents who are here and people are watching this, is that we didn't do it incorrectly, we did it correctly as it was presented at the time, because our, our people who work up in finance do a really good job, and they're very dedicated to what they do, and they, they check and double-check and triple-check. I want to make sure that this had to be changed, because the government changed the bucket, not because we put it in the wrong bucket, they changed the process, so we had to adjust it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Because we did it the right way, they changed it, so we had to adjust.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. Exactly. So those, again, were really the three items that we had to discuss today. The other letter that you have in, that you have up there, really is just our report on the audit process, and if we had any other findings or audit matters that we needed to discuss with you, they'd be reported in here. But again, except for those three items we just, we just covered, we really don't have any other audit matters to discuss with you today. Again, as Dave mentioned, you've got the unmodified opinion, your staff did, did a great job helping us complete the audit in efficient manner, I appreciate everything that Jacqueline and Adam and your entire team has done. They're very gracious towards us. We are here for several weeks, months, kind of performing the audit and kind of interrupting their day-to-day activities, but they're just, you know, great to work with, and we appreciate all their support throughout the process.
Questions from the board? Unless you have something to say, Dave, I don't know if you want to, if you have something to say.
I'm thinking what time is.
The only, I mean, I'm glad Bill touched with, with Jacqueline, because, you know, Jacqueline does carry, you know, as far as the audit is concerned, you know, handles most of our questions. I know she's got a whole team that supports her, including Adam, who really got the A133 or federal program audit. But in addition to our normal, our normal accounting audit procedures, there's a change in the auditing standards this year that, you know, it does affect, obviously, us being the auditors, but it significantly affects the documentation and all of these forms that basically, you know, Jacqueline and her team had to go back through and reconstruct in another, in a different manner, so we get to test it in accordance with the auditing standards. So that was no light undertaking, as I'm sure Jacqueline can attest to, fortunately. It's one of those things, I think it's you rip the Band-Aid off, and once you got it that first time, it's just a tweak, tweak going forward. So again, you know, we appreciate, you know, as Bill had mentioned, everything that the township did to get ready for the audit. You know, we're here at today's meeting, and the township will meet its statutory requirement to file within 180 days of the year-end. As soon as this gets approved, we'll let our folks know tomorrow morning and have everything uploaded to Treasury.
To the Chair. Dave, just a quick question, because, for one, it just seems unfair that now we have a blemish, as big or small as it may be, but when we went over this report before with the three of us.
Yes.
This had not come up. So when did this?
The blemish for?
Yeah, for this last one, where we put it in the wrong bucket.
I think it did. I think we had a discussion on it. It was just going to be, I think- It was just going to be, I think the discussion was what the, because we had talked about this response, what the finding was. I think what the township was determining was what its view would be and what the exact language would be in the finding. So we really don't have, you know, Bill hit it right on the head and I think we kind of all understood it. And he went through the process and the planning. He did so under the rules that were in place at the time. By the time the expenditure actually came along, the rules had changed. Now, I'll say fortunately, but I mean, not really, because we knew that there was, you kind of got this catch-all bucket that can really pull anything in. It ended up just being reported requirement. I mean, they were all allowable expenditures. At the end of the day, it was just on the report that you filed, kind of which bucket you recorded on. So it never, and I think Bill had mentioned, it never was going to be an allowability issue at all. We all knew that. It was just a matter on that report, that quarter. I think it's quarterly filing report, really just under what section of the ARPA that you were incurred in these expenditures. I don't, I mean, personally, I don't look at that as a blemish. I know, I know you all do, but you know what? When we look at that, I always focus, especially around the single audit, is is there question costs? Like, and there's none. So question cost is like, hey, there's a blemish and it's significant enough where, you know, the grantor could come back and say, hold on, you spent this incorrectly, you owe the money back. And we're not there. This is just more of a control thing, you know, it was clearly unique. I wouldn't anticipate this because, you know, ARPA is essentially going to expire, you're going to run through your money in the next two years. We don't really anticipate that. At this point, there really shouldn't be any change. Gosh, I hope any more changes now that really the spending requirements are going away.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Not only that, I wanted to thank you for the years that you've been at Plant Moran, but also with Redford. And I wish you well in your next chapter.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with the township for all of these years. For those of you that don't know, I'll be retiring in June, so this will be the last. I'll be part, I think, of next year's audit, but this will be my last audit presentation from the township.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you so much. Any questions from trustee Jackson?
As we were talking about that, so-called blemish, basically, we could have said that was a reclassification.
Uh, yeah, you could, but on a reporting side, yes. I think you couldn't want that.
I guess what I would say is, so when we test these grants, the federal government says, here's the six things you have to look at, and one of them is reporting. And unfortunately, we don't get any judgment in that. It's a yes, no. Was it reported? Was the report that was filed with the federal government properly stated? And this was a no. But ultimately, yes, it was a reclass. That's why we tried to explain that in the finding, but unfortunately, it's a yes, no for us.
So Bill, don't they go back and then amend the next report?
Yes.
So you now have a report, your next report that goes out will have that clarification in there.
And I just wanted to say thank you to Jaclyn. She's kind of our unsung hero. She's real quiet. She never really says anything.
Other questions from the board?
Can I real quick just say, I just want to say thank you to the rest of the finance staff.
Yes.
And also just all the departments, because everyone really does help out. And I ask a lot of questions during the audit, so I appreciate everyone's help.
Yes, she does.
All right. Thank you, Jaclyn. Anything else? All right. Thank you all for your presentation. Dave, have fun. Enjoy. Enjoy. But make sure we have your phone number in case we need you for something.
Right. On Sunday.
I think most.
Most we do, yes.
I will be part of next year's audit.
Okay. All right. Next is a consent agenda item. Treasury cabinet.
Thank you, Supervisor McCray. I move to approve the consent agenda items that follows. The minutes for the study session at meeting September 10th of 2024. The minutes of regular meeting, September 10th of 2024. The warrant list of bills as of September 19th in the amount of $5,762,813.92. The first quarter investment earnings report, April 1st of 2024 through June 30th of 2024, on file for audit. Receive and file the audited financial statements as of March 31st of 2024. Support.
Supported by trustee Taylor. Any discussion?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
It's not reported on the agenda. I would just like to congratulate Treasurer Kavanaugh and the finance team. The total revenue in interest income was 1.1 million dollars, 443,000 and a couple other numbers, but almost 1.3 million dollars is fantastic. So congratulations on that.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have unfinished business. Mr. Dennis.
Mr. Supervisor, on a board. Last meeting, Attorney Chubb, he handled this for us. He was here. He's not here today for this meeting. So in front of you is a second reading, asking for a second reading to repeal the current interim prohibition of marijuana establishments and facility ordinance that was approved by the board July 9th, 2019. Obviously, as everyone knows, we, the township passed establishments and orderly zoning district ordinances earlier this year. And so we cannot have a ordinance on the books that prohibits this on top of what we already established. So this is the second reading to repeal ordinance number 355.
Questions from the board? Hearing on what's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move for the approval of the second reading to repeal ordinance number 365, the interim prohibition of marijuana establishments and facilities.
Support.
Right. Trustee Kennedy, motions to approval of the second reading to repeal ordinance 355 interim prohibition of marijuana establishments and facilities. Any discussion? Vote, all vote. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
No.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion passes.
Next, we have new business, number one, Director Dennis.
Mr. Supervisor, on a board. In previous memo requesting recommendation to replace the South Fire Station driveway and Minock Meadows parking lot replacement. I've been working together with both Director Mancini and Chief Demoff on this project for some time. We kind of had to go back and forth, working together with Wade Trim for the parking lot at Minock. And as a team, we, you know, put together this information. Big thanks to both, you know, Director Mancini and Chief Demoff did a lot of hard work on this and then we did together with the bid package. In front of you is a, after careful research, is a bid recommendation to award the contract. We did is we did one contract, one bid for both sites to help lessen the cost on, you know, mobilization. It just seemed a lot easier to do it this way, one contractor, one, you know, to do both sites. The lowest approved bidder was True North Asphalt in Madison Heights. They had a total bid of $421,069.06. They were one of five submitted bids that came in earlier this month. And I know their name says True North Asphalt, but they also are a concrete company as well. They are currently doing concrete projects. They just happen to have asphalt in their, you know, business name. Again, we went through all of them, researched. They turned in multiple projects they have worked on in the last few years. And we feel comfortable that we are able to make the recommendation to approve this project to True North Asphalt.
Questions from the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
Mike, have we ever worked with True North before?
We have not. We have not. We've only worked with one of the companies on here before.
So my question two would be, I know the chief isn't always the best. We had that issue with some other things at the Northern Fire Station. Do we know the quality of the work and the quality of their materials? Because it pains me not to be able to use a local contractor.
I do, and that would be an awful big difference between that one and that.
I know.
I do not disagree. I love giving local business. I tout that. It is, yes, we've looked at their background. Both Chief Demoff and Director Mancini even went to visit sites, websites, but they visited sites to make sure. Chief Demoff had a conversation with the contractor explicitly about this to, because this is the front driveway only at the south station and, you know, and because, you know, they got a very good price on that. And I will tell, when we did the walkthrough, the contractor was the only one on site who actually, at that time, because it was raining, walked to site when we were all, you know, kind of waiting for it to stop raining. I think they feel very comfortable that this company will do the work that they say they're going to do. And obviously, out of this price, this is, the fire station is one-fifth of the cost. They're, you know, less than that. So it's a, for the front only, where the big part of this project is at Minock Meadows. So, and Wade Trim will, has been contracted, will be contracted to be assisting when the work is going on at Minock.
Okay. To the chair.
Treasury cabinet.
I think in the same vein, do we know what material they're using? Because I know that there's, and I don't know if this is a question for Ms. Mancini, the fact that some cement is not very good and that it's crumbling? Now, I don't know exactly what brand or what that is, but, I mean, do we know if they're using a particular type of material?
It's all detailed in specs, but what you're describing is, there's been two issues out here right now, is there was some discussion that it was mixed, that was brought in, you know, cement powder from Turkey.
Right.
And that's been discussed, that was back in, you know, a handful of years ago. And also some standards that changed the state. But I think we feel very comfortable that we will hopefully not have that issue.
Okay. All right. Thank you. To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Question along the same lines. Was there any discussion with them as to why they could do this so much cheaper than the next highest bid? I mean, what was their rationale?
Everyone, there's always the bottom line, there's always the top line. I mean, I don't, I just feel very comfortable it was asked.
That they could do.
They can do it for this price, yes. And they will have eyes on them, guaranteed. You have 24 hours, seven days a week, eyes sitting in the south end, and you have two full-time staff members and 90 apartments at Minock watching you. So you have a lot of hogs.
What's going to be the parking arrangement at Minock Meadows while they're doing this? Are they just going to do part of the parking lot, not that cure, and then they do another?
No, probably to an extent, when they did asphalt a handful of years ago, they were parking on Minock Circle. They, and in some, they'll probably try to do that, but it's going to be a little hard because there's only one access into that complex. So I think what they'll do is, depending on how fast they can move on this, a lot of the folks will park and it is for on Minock Circle, which is to the west.
Other questions from the board? Hearing on what's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
I move to approve the bid recommendation of the South Fire Station driveway replacement and Minock Meadows parking lot replacement project be awarded to True North Asphalt, Madison Heights, Michigan 48071, in the amount of $421,069.06 to be paid from Fund 402 and 536.
Support.
Supported by trustee Jackson. Motions to approval of the bid recommendation, South Fire Station driveway replacement and Minock Meadows parking lot replacement project be awarded to True North Asphalt, Madison Heights, Michigan 48071, in the amount of $421,069.06 to be paid from Fund 402 and Fund 536. Any other discussion? Vote, all vote. Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
No.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you all. Have a good night. Oh, aren't you up there for the next one? Did you forget?
Did you forget already?
Wow.
Second time today.
Mr. Supervisor, on a board. We have made the recommendation to ask this wonderful board to please appoint Ms. Michelle Mancini to the Redford Festival Committee. I also would like to correct my earlier assistant comment statement, as I did not include Ms. Mancini on our festival committee, because at the time I wrote down the members and I excluded her, so I apologize for that. Yeah, she's doing, really? Many years, right? So, so we, you know, Michelle's always been here to help us out. Thought it was an obvious fit, a perfect fit to join us. She was there the whole weekend. I think when you and I left, it was about quarter to 2:00 on Sunday morning.
Yes.
You know, so she was here to help out. And, you know, she's a great asset to Redford, as we all know. So I'm asking this board to please, please approve the recommendation of Michelle to the festival committee, and I'm going to turn it over to her then, to the board, so.
To the chair.
Sorry about that.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
Great job.
Was there any enforcement or any kind of issue to make you do this?
Like, you mean, was it pressured?
Gun? Is there a gun?
No.
Okay. All right. So you want this, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. That's not real sure.
I really enjoy working on the festivals with, I mean, the members of the festival committee are some of Redford's best, and I feel lucky to work with them on these events.
They're lucky to have you too.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we approve the appointment of Michelle Mancini to the Redford Township Festival Committee, term expiring September 30th, 2027.
Support.
Supported by trustee Kennedy. So the motion is to approve the appointment of Michelle Mancini to Redford Township Festival Committee, term ending 9/30/2027. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Director Stokes.
Good evening, honorable board. At the last meeting, I came before you for the approval of the pickleball boards. And at this time, I'm coming before you to ask that for the approval for Wade Trim Professional Construction Engineering Services to assist with the handyball, handy, keep on calling it a handyball, pickleball. Handy part, pickleball boards. Kind of like a tongue twister. So this, they will assist in the oversight, they'll work with the pre-construction meetings, the construction contract administration, ensuring the contract request for information and shop drawings. As you know, they worked with us on all of the original shop drawings with this. It is a very large project. It's over a half a million dollars. So we want to make sure that it's done correctly, since we're tearing up that whole site over there. It actually has been marked off already, so work is hoping to begin. I believe they picked up the permit today from Redford Township, so we are hoping to start the project shortly. But at this time, I'm coming before you to ask for the approval for Wade Trim for Construction Engineering Services in the amount not to exceed $32,700.
Questions from the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Director's dose, was this included in the original overall budget? Was this an additional cost?
This is an additional cost. This is an additional cost, and this will still come out of the MEDC grant funding, so it's none, no funding from the general fund. It's all paid underneath that $750,000 we have.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Very none. What's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the professional services provided by Wade Trim for Construction Engineering Services in conjunction with the renovation of Handy Park Tennis Courts into Pickleball Courts in the amount not to exceed $32,700 to be paid from the MEDC grant for park improvement. Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. Motion is for approval of the attached proposal for professional services provided by Wade Trim for Construction Engineering Services in conjunction with the renovation of Handy Park Tennis Courts to Pickleball Courts in the amount not to exceed $32,700 to be paid from the MEDC grant for park improvements. Any other questions from the board? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Historical Commission, please.
Julie Fountain, 26739 Vassar, Redford, and I'm the chairperson of the Historical Commission. And we are before you today to fill our board membership and ask that Brianna Taylor be appointed by your board to our board as our seventh member. And here's Brianna.
Good evening, Board. My name is Brianna Taylor. I live at 10,002 Mercedes, Redford, and I have been a lifelong resident of Redford, Michigan. And it would be an honor to work with this Historical Commission and to be able to help honor and preserve the rich and sometimes overlooked history of my hometown. I really do hope to learn, to teach, and to dig up more history of this town and to create much deserved interest in Redford.
Questions from the board? Yes, applause, Mike. Any questions in the board? Don't cry.
No.
Any questions from the board?
Love of the hair. Oh, thank you. Oh, my hair.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board on this?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move to approve the appointment of Brianna Taylor to the Redford Township Historical Commission with a term expiring 9/30/2027. Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. So the motion is to appoint, the appointment of Brianna Taylor to the Redford Township Historical Commission, term expiring 9/30/2027. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Honorable Board. Chairman.
Yes, Honorable Board, I am here to request your approval of a $100,000 transfer from General Fund to the Michigan Indigent Defense Fund. We received money through the MEDC grant that's involved with the court. However, we have differing fiscal years. We end on 3/31, and the grant year end is 9/30. So we had a deficit in this 3/31/24 audit, so we are transferring this money in order to cover that and hopefully not have this in the future. It will be paid back to the General Fund in the future as well. And one other part of this is that we need to file this as a deficit elimination plan as part of the audit to be in compliance. So, are there any questions?
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Since we're on different fiscal year ends, why wouldn't this occur all the time?
That's a good question, and I'm not sure why it hasn't. We did have a little bit of, like, a weird funding thing that happened throughout the year. We were short at the end of, I think, the last fiscal year, at the end of 9/30 of '23, we were short, and then they were supposed to pay us back. So there's a little weirdness there, and I'm hoping that it'll kind of work itself out. But doing this will still cover it in the meantime. But yeah, if it happens again, I plan on trying to see.
Yeah, I would assume that it would happen.
Yeah.
Eventually, because of the seven, almost seven months difference in the fiscal year end.
Yeah, we received payments throughout the year, like, three or four payments, and then it just, yeah. I tried to work with MEDC to try to figure out why we, like, how we can reconcile it, and they didn't really know either, and said it was very confusing. So, so I thought, well, this will at least help us in the March 31st, '24 year, and going forward, we can, if it happens again, hopefully not, but we'll see more why it's not working and maybe how we can adjust it. So, I don't think the auditors have seen it before either, so, I don't know. Anything else?
Other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee King.
I move approval of the $100,000 transfer from the General Fund to the Michigan Indigent Defense Fund.
Second.
Second by Clerk Christie. So the motion is to approve, approval of the $100,000 transfer from General Fund to Michigan Indigent Defense Fund. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Mansfield.
Good evening, again, Honorable Board. You have two memos before you from me, and they are in fact related. Our first one is, I am here to request that this board accept the 2025 Burn Justice Assistant Grant, what we call a JAG. This is through, administered through the State of Michigan in the amount of $108,551. And what is this JAG for? This is to support our embedded crisis clinician, our social worker, otherwise known as Let's Keep Sonya Employed Here, right? And that's all I am asking. This is, this particular grant will run from October 1st of this year through September 30th of next year.
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Chief Mansfield, do you expect this to be additional, like, additional years added on? What's this like, the last time we could expect?
Well, this is the second time we've been awarded it. There's a chance that we might get it a third time, because it is a very successful program. But the more times they were successful, other municipalities try and jump on the bandwagon. So we're already looking at ways that we can help fund this in the future, but for right now, I'll take what I can get.
Other questions? Other questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
Just a comment. I know that she's doing very well, and it's good for the township to have somebody like that that can mitigate some of this stuff and de-escalate as best she can, so, thank you.
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move to accept the 2025 Burn Justice Assistant Grant, or JAG, grant administered by the Michigan State Police in the amount of $108,551. Support.
For the Treasurer Kavanaugh, motions accept the 2025 Byron Justice Assistant Grant, JAG, administered by the Michigan State Police in the amount of $108,551. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries.
Excellent, thank you. And part two, I am here to request the renewal of our Higera Health contract, which is the contract that employs our clinician, Sonya McCain. This contract is in the amount of $108,551. Shocker. And it is set up in such a way that the township does not incur any costs additional in order for Sonya to be here. Sorry, guys. As trustee, or excuse me, as Treasurer Kavanaugh mentioned, Sonya has made a huge impact on this township in the short time that she's been here. We have only had her since the end of February, and she is easily making 50 contacts a day, or excuse me, a month. That's a lot, and not to mention the paperwork that's involved. Our officers are readily calling for her on scene. We have citizens that are calling her directly. She has already begun assisting our training goals. She's actually been holding roll call trainings, trying to get our officers as educated as possible. This is a fantastic addition to our police department. We are able to offer so many more resources than what we can just as law enforcement alone. So I truly hope that the board can support this ongoing contract with Higera. The only contract, or difference that you will see between last year's and this year's contract is simply a line that we hope to renew it each year unless someone on either side has an issue. Thank you.
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
I still have stuff to say.
Yes, ma'am. Maybe I'll get you a great elected position.
I want to thank you, you yourself, for also partnering with other organizations that also help not only the township, but the camaraderie with other law enforcement and such, so, without naming names, but, you know, I just want to thank you for all the proactiveness that you've taken on to. That's it.
To the Chair.
Treasurer Taylor, or Trustee Taylor.
Uh-huh. See, I'm not the only one.
Well, you started it.
I've been promoted.
You started it.
I've been long. I move to approve the renewal of the contract with Higera Health in the amount of $108,551 to be paid from the 2025 Burn Justice Assistant Grant, or the JAG, grant. Support.
Supported. Motion is for approval, for the approval to renew our contract with Higera Health in the amount of $108,551 to be paid for from the 2025 Byron Justice Assistant Grant, JAG. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, from the board?
Mr. Chairman, we've got an election coming up, October 26th, or the early voting stage, so it's right around the corner. We did have to move some precincts, and I'm going to call on my deputy, Darian Bird, to give us some additional election information. And we should highlight, remind people about those changed voting locations, too.
Perfect. All right, come to you a happy camper today, not just because the Lions won on Sunday, but...
That's all that matters.
It's a win for the township and really a win for the Clerk's Office as well. I was able to secure us a $30,000 election grant, which we received the check yesterday, so it's all legit, thankfully. And so with that, we are able to upgrade our laptops, voting equipment for the workers and residents. It also allows us to encourage voters and non-voters to get out and vote, and we'll do that by way of mailers. And so with that, that definitely helps getting people involved in the election. As Clerk Christie stated, there's two precincts that will not be at their regular location. That'd be Precinct 15, which is Jefferson, they'll be at Pierce Middle School, and then Precinct 16, that's Vandenberg, they'll be at World Peace Outreach. And those changes are because those buildings are still under construction, which is why they weren't used in August. So those two precincts will be there. And if you are either one of those precincts, you'll be receiving a postcard that looks something like this, making you aware of the changes. And on the back is a handy-dandy map that states and shows where your location is in regards to all the major roads. All right? And that should be mailed out to you within the next two weeks. A couple more things here. So absentee ballots were mailed out today in the south end. So the county reached out to us and made us aware that there was a misprint for the Redford Union School Board race. And so that's North Redford. The partial term seat was the seat that was missing. And so we were successful in stopping a majority of those ballots in North Redford. So if you are a North Redford resident, if you happen to get a ballot that includes the Redford Union School Board race without the partial term, that ballot will be spoiled, and you will be receiving a new ballot sent to you within the next week. The new ballot envelope will be different, so you will be able to differentiate between the ballot that we sent you and the ballot that's going to be sent via the county, well, with the county's help. And it'll also contain a letter from the county with the reason for the new ballot. Election Day is 41 days away, so you can still request an absentee ballot at the Clerk's Office, and as Clerk Christie said, my last one, early voting is 8:30 to 4:30, October 26th through November the 3rd. Thank you.
Good job.
Anything, other announcements from the board? Well, again, I want to thank the Festival Committee for doing a great job in Oktoberfest. They worked very, very hard, and it's a long, hard two days to tear down, put up, and make everything happen, so thanks to them. I also want to say that I was able to stop by the Historical Commission's corn roast. Best corn ever. No, you only had to put butter on it, it was good. I want to find out where I can get some more of that, because it was delicious, it was a nice event, they had a nice crowd, had some entertainment. If you missed it, I'm sure they'll be doing it again next year. So please make an effort to go out and support them with their corn roast and go and see what we have here, here in Township, where we've been and where we're going, so. And lastly, I'm going to wish my wife a happy birthday, because today's her birthday, and she says I'm spending all her time with you at Town Hall, so. So, if she's watching, I said happy birthday, so I do love you and happy birthday. So, nothing else to come before the board? This meeting's adjourned.